Good evening, Thousand Oaks. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for July 1st, 2024. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or telephone conference. But everybody, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Link is absent. And Chair Lanson?
Here. Turn on my own mic. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Meliker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
No continuances, but we have a supplemental packet for both items A and B that has been distributed to the Commission and posted, containing information on written correspondence from both staff and the public related to both items.
Thank you. Going on to item five, Madam Secretary, I don't believe we have any general comments, but let me know.
No, we do not.
She made the last look down the hallway just to make sure. Going to item six, Consent Calendar. Next, we have the Consent Calendar with the minutes of June 17, 2024, of that Planning Commission meeting, and a finding of a general plan consistency for city acquisition of open space property on Caneo Ridge Road, north of Skyline Drive, and the subsequent transfer of that Caneo Space Open Space Conservancy Agency, and finding the project exempt. Isn't that what we're doing tonight?
This one is just, again, for the consent, it's to find that it is exempt.
Okay. That was the exemption. Okay. Do any of my Commissioners have any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of June 17, 2024. And are we making a recommendation on, or are we just going on to B?
I believe just to approve the minutes, because we had that, and I get confused as well, just to approve the minutes.
All right. That's it.
Any other comments? I don't think we're good. Please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Link absent.
Now, we go on to item 7A. Madam Secretary, could you please open the public hearing? Hold on one second.
Did we approve the minutes, or did we also approve 6B, which was the general consistency finding? Do we need to do that separately?
No, by approving the minutes, you're approving, I'm sorry, did you approve the consent items? Is that what?
I believe that we approved the minutes. We did not approve the consent calendars. We probably need a second motion to do 6B properly, right?
I misunderstood. I thought she was, the motion was for the consent calendar as a whole.
Ah, that was not on this process. So, yeah, that was just the minutes.
Okay. So, we need a second vote.
So, we need a second one. So, I should...
For 6B, yeah.
Okay. So, that was broken up. So, that was for 6A. Let's go on to 6B, then. Do I have any comments or a motion with regard to 6B?
I will make the motion that we adopt item 6B, the general plan consistency finding for city acquisition of open space property located on Caneo Ridge Road, north of Skyline Drive, 676-0-070-070, and subsequent transfer to Caneo Open Space Conservancy Agency, and COSCA acceptance, and find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines, 14 CCR Sections 15313 and 15325.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Link absent.
And thank you, Commissioner Ferris, for picking that up. Again, let's try this take two. Item 7A, Madam Secretary, could you please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by laws hereby open to consider agenda item 7A, wireless communications facility, WCF 2024-70001, to allow installation of a new wireless telecommunications facility consisting of six antennas with support equipment to be installed within a proposed heightened steeple to be raised by 16 feet, associated radio equipment, and an emergency generator within a proposed ground level equipment enclosure at an existing church, Holy Trinity Lutheran Church, and find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to Class 1, Section 15301, existing facility of the SEQA guidelines located at 1 West Avenida de los Arboles. The applicant is Ryan Lee of Triad Group for Dish Wireless LLC.
And I see presenting for the staff will be Planning Manager Kristin Rice.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is what Lori so eloquently just mentioned, so I'm not going to reiterate what's on the slide, and I'll move on. Per the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Planning Commission review is required for new wireless facilities in a residential zone with approval of a special use permit. In this case, the proposed facility is located on a property with a zoning of rural exclusive. The subject property is located west of Moore Park Road, south of West Olson Road, to the east of Lynn Road, and on the north side of West Avenida de los Arboles. This area contains residential homes, including single-family homes and some multifamily homes, a fire station, a healthcare center, and California Lutheran University. Here is an aerial of the property outlined in red. As you can see, to the north, it's the new fire station, which, while this area shows the property at the beginning stages of construction, the fire station building is actually almost constructed at this point, with some site work going on right now. To the south and east are residential homes, and to the west is a healthcare center and the multifamily homes. From the church's steeple, it's approximately 115 feet to the closest home to the east, and approximately 175 feet to the closest home to the south. The existing property includes the church, which was approved for construction in 1972, and includes several other accessory buildings on site. This is the first wireless facility proposed for this site. Here's a close-up view of the site plan, which contains an aerial image of where the antennas and equipment in the steeple are to be located, which is in the lower left-hand corner. The wall enclosure to house the generator is attached to the front facade of the church. All new equipment for the properties include six new antennas, 12 RRUSs, one surge suppressor, one hybrid cable, an equipment cabinet, one H-frame, one GPS antenna, and one emergency To better illustrate this, this is the applicant's photo simulation. The photo on the left is the existing church, and the photo on the right includes the simulation of the extension of the steeple, and also you can see the wall enclosure to house the generator, which is located on the right side of the screen. The proposed facility is designed to have limited visibility from any adjacent point, requiring only periodic maintenance, visits, and emit no loud noises or sound. To clear up some confusion, this is a close-up view of the top of the steeple. The dashed angled line indicates the height of the existing steeple. With the construction of the extension of the steeple, the tallest point of the steeple will be 60 feet in height. So, depending on where the height is measured from, the extension could be considered to be 10 feet 6 inches in height, or if measured from the lowest point of the existing steeple, could be 16 feet in height. An alternative site analysis is required by the applicant to explain the site selection process for the proposed wireless communications facility, including information about other sites considered, and the reason for each site's rejection. The applicant evaluated three sites for the proposed facility and determined that the current proposed site is the most suitable, considering compatibility with adjacent development and reduced view impacts. The applicant considered the sites at 2977 Montcalf Boulevard, 3203 Montcalf Boulevard, and 93 West Avenida de los Arboles before pursuing the current proposed location. The first alternate site location is located directly north of the proposed site at the new fire station. The site was rejected because the existing building is too low in height to meet the applicant's wireless coverage requirements. The second site is located further north of the proposed site on the northwest corner of Faculty Road and Montcalf Boulevard on the California Lutheran University campus. The site was rejected because the buildings on this parcel are also too low in height, and the property owner was non-responsive to the applicant's lease inquiries. The third site is located directly west of the proposed site, and this site was rejected because a new tower or other architectural feature would be required to meet the applicant's wireless coverage needs. It is for these reasons that the three alternative sites were rejected. I do want to point out that for this proposed location, that when wireless facilities are located in residential areas, churches or other religious buildings are often sought out because they typically include architectural features, such as a steeple that are tall enough or can be extended in height to achieve the goal of providing acceptable leverage, level of coverage for wireless facilities, whereas other types of buildings would require the construction of an after-the-fact tower element that may not blend as well into the existing architecture of a building. The proposed location was chosen because it has a taller building with a higher architectural feature, will minimize visual impacts, and will assist in filling the service gap to the intended area of coverage. As part of the alternative sites analysis, the applicant is required to submit propagation maps. Propagation maps are used to show in a visual format the coverage for a wireless communication facility, and can show the gap in coverage in the applicant's current communication systems. As noted here, the applicant is looking to fill the gap to the east of the site, where there are many residential homes, which is colored in the dark and lighter green areas. This is the applicant's propagation map that shows the future coverage with the installation of the proposed site. As you can see here, the proposed wireless facility will increase coverage to fill in the current service gap in the area, which is shown in the addition of the orange areas and lighter green areas east of the proposed site. As part of the evaluation on the proposed project, to provide a uniform and comprehensive set of standards for the development of wireless communication facilities, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 97-197, which regulates the approval, location, and design of wireless communication antennas and facilities. This resolution affects all wireless facilities within the city's jurisdiction. Per Section 4B2AII of the resolution, the utilization of a church or other religious building is specifically identified as an acceptable location for a new wireless facility within a residential area, provided that it is constructed as an integrated architectural feature. The following slides will describe the evaluation conducted, including compliance with the city's general plan and zoning, project design and project visibility, appropriateness of land use, and the technical review. The project meets several goals and policies of the city's new general plan within the community facilities and services element, and also the safety element in terms of telecommunication infrastructure, siting, and emergency use for the protection of life and property. The project site is zoned rural-exclusive, which is consistent with the Neighborhood Lo 1 designation in the general plan's land use element. The proposed wireless facility is in allowed use within the RE zone with the approval of a special use permit. A second criteria used to evaluate the proposed project is its design and visibility. The proposed facility has been designed to meet the required development standards from the city's adopted resolution, particularly Section 5 Subsection L, in that the proposed facility is to be integrated into the design of the existing buildings and appurtenent features or structures wherever possible, and examples of this do include church steeples. As such, in this case, the proposed facility has been designed to meet the standards and will be concealed within the proposed extension to the steeple, which is designed to match. An emergency diesel generator is proposed to provide power to the facility in the event of a power outage. It will be contained within an above-ground wall enclosure designed to match the existing facade of the church. The generator is approximately 90 feet from the nearest residence and is located on the east side of the church building facing Montcalf Boulevard. The generator is conditioned to have scheduled tests running approximately once a month to ensure proper operation in the event of an emergency. A third evaluation criteria is the appropriateness of the land use. The proposed facility may be approved with a special use permit, provided that the use is compatible with the uses of the site and adjoining uses. In this case, the site is surrounded by single-family and multifamily residential uses, along with a healthcare facility and a fire station. To be visually compatible with the adjoining uses, the facility is designed to be completely contained within the extension of the steeple, and the extension still be painted to match the steeple. Additional equipment in the emergency generator would be installed in a new above-ground closure, and no component of the wireless facility would be exposed to public view. Therefore, the proposed facility will not have an unreasonable detrimental visual impact. This project was reviewed for compliance with FCC guidelines by our city's wireless consultant, Dr. Jonathan Kramer, and at this time, I would like to introduce him formally, and I have a bit of an introduction, since it has been a while since we have had a wireless hearing. So, with that, I'm going to say that with us tonight is Dr. Jonathan Kramer, head of telecom law firm. He has been the city's wireless and broadband telecom advisor for more than 36 years. In addition to being a lawyer, Dr. Kramer is a telecom engineer with nearly 50 years of practical experience in wireless cable and fiber communications. As a local government advisor, Dr. Kramer and his staff have been involved in reviewing thousands of cell site project applications on behalf of local governments throughout the U.S. Dr. Kramer co-authored and co-edited the FCC's National Guide to Local and State Governments on Radio Frequency Emissions and the Commission's RF Safety Rules. Over the years, he has been an expert technology witness or advisor in over 40 wireless and broadband cases, including cases involving RF safety concerns. For clarity, Dr. Kramer and his staff do not work for or represent wireless firms or the wireless industry. Dr. Kramer will have a few short comments for the Commission on tonight's project, and he will be here to answer any questions you have for him.
Thank you, Kristin. It sounds like I could have written that myself. Good evening. It's been a year and a half since I've been here, and it's nice to see you again. My firm reviewed the project, as we do for virtually every project that comes through the city on wireless matters, all the way back to, well, heck, I was around helping write 97-197. And this is a particularly consistent project with both the code and the intent. Dish Wireless, the applicant, tonight is a new entrant into the market. They are basically creating a new competitive network to compete with AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon. Sprint was acquired by T-Mobile, and now Dish is coming in to fill in the gap that was left by that merger. We reviewed the project for both design and for RF safety elements. The project does comply with 97-197, and as for the radio frequency emissions, it fully complies with the FCC rules. In fact, the maximum emissions that require any consideration go out about 38 feet from the antennas, and the closest home is about 115 feet. So, the RF is not an issue. In fact, from the FCC's perspective, this is a project that doesn't require any further evaluation based on the compliance that's presented. Not much to report, otherwise, the generator they're proposing is consistent with most of the new carriers that are, or most of the new sites that are being built. The generator is because, gosh, it's a surprise, but SCE isn't consistently 100% there, and when there's a power outage, that tends to be the time when people want to reach for their mobile phones and use them. So, that's the purpose of the standby power generator. With that, I don't have a whole lot more to add, but I'm sure you'll have questions for me, and when you do, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kramer. I just have a couple more slides. The project was reviewed for com... Oops, sorry. One next more. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, which allows for alterations to existing facilities. Additionally, no exception to Section 15302 of the SEQA guidelines applies to the projects, including subsections A through C, which was mentioned in the staff report. Staff received two emails of correspondence and one phone call from a member of the public seeking information on how to attend the hearing tonight. There were concerns raised regarding health aesthetics, particularly about the height of the steeple and property values. For this project, as Dr. Kramer mentioned, a technical review has been completed and determined the proposed facility to be compliance with FCC guidelines. Regarding aesthetics, as noted earlier, there was some confusion on the height of the proposed extension. However, the facility is designed to have minimal visual impact. Lastly, in terms of property values, that is not a criteria that the city uses to evaluate wireless facilities and is not discussed in the city's adopted resolution. All public correspondents received responses from staff in a timely manner. Finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15301 of the SEQA guidelines, and adopt the resolution approving the facility, WCF 2024-70001, based on the findings and subject to the conditions included in the attached resolution. And I'd like to point out that included within the supplemental packet that went out this afternoon, and in consultation with our wireless consultants, staff would like to add that one condition, specifically after condition number 12, which is in the design section of the resolution, which requires that no equipment shall extend above the height of the new wall enclosure of the steeple. Shall not extend. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And there was one additional email of public correspondence that was attached to the supplemental packet. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And I think, Mr. Dr. Kramer, I think the last time you were with us was on Zoom, so this is probably the first time I've seen you in person in over four years. So thanks for being here. With that, we'll go to Commissioner Questions. Commissioner Ferris?
Could you help clarify just the language for the additional thing? I'm reading the additional condition as no equipment shall extend above the height of the new wall enclosure or steeple. Are you good with that wording? I heard a "not" here and there, and I just wanted to make sure that which wording we have in front of us.
The intent is that as to the ground-level equipment, nothing extend visually above the top of the proposed CMU wall. As for the steeple, that basically nothing be visible but the external portion of the steeple itself.
Do you feel that the wording, as it's stated here, is exactly the intent? I just want to make sure, because I think that I heard a "not" somewhere in there, and about what the additional condition is.
Yeah, I should have a "not." It was omitted by mistake. You shall not extend above.
We're missing a word. Well, I'm sorry. No equipment shall not extend. It's correct. The way that I heard it being presented, I may have stumbled in and said "not," suggested "not" by accident, but it's correct. Again, the goal is keep it what it is, but make it not visible to the public.
I am totally good with the intent. I just want to make sure that I'm hearing that the language is actually there, because I felt like there were some double negatives in there. So just as a note before we get to motion.
Any other questions from commissioners? I just had a quick one, just to clarify. It's funny, I think the last time you were with us was for another steeple wireless project in on Ventura Road. I'm assuming there's been no changes to the limitations of what our review is in terms of health and safety and other things, but can you give us kind of a quick summary of exactly what our purview can be?
Congress in the 1996 Telecom Act basically said that the FCC was to create a national body of standards for RF safety, which it did, and that local governments and state governments would have the ability to look at whether a proposed project complies with those standards. If it does, in this case, it does, but if it does, then that's the end of our exploration. We're not allowed to condition or deny a project because of RF safety concerns if the project demonstrates plan compliance. That's one of the reasons why the city asks us to review the projects, is to make those determinations. And, you know, it's interesting, because over the years, the projects that come before you all demonstrate compliance, but what you don't see are the projects that never make it to the planning commission because they didn't comply and they got stopped at the staff level. So when you get a project brought to you, it does comply with the FCC rules, and therefore, under settled law and FCC regulations, that's no longer a consideration point. You still have your full authority to look at other issues, for example, design and so forth. The other consideration that comes into play is if a wireless carrier has a significant gap, then they're allowed to close it. And in this case, we have a new entrant, so by definition, basically, everything they're doing at this stage of their deployment is closing significant gaps. So if it closes the significant gap, if it complies with 97-197, if it complies with the FCC rules for RF safety, then that should lead to a conclusion of approval. If any of those elements are missing, then it should lead to an issue of denial.
Thank you. And just kind of my own curiosity, so the applicant at this point is not sharing the feed, so to speak, with Verizon and T-Mobile and those others. It's their own exclusive use.
This is, as it's proposed, an exclusive use site, however. It is not impossible to conceive that at some point in the future, another carrier might want to come to this site. But we don't know. And one of the things the courts have said, just to answer the question, but also to give you the legal answer, it's that the future possibility of a co-location cannot be considered at the onset of another hearing. In other words, the future potential is not something we consider for today's reality.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions. Any other questions with commissioners? All right, so let's go to the applicant at this point, which I believe is, the main speaker is Ryan Lee. You will have 15 minutes to present. Could you please come to the podium and state your name and save residence for the record?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ryan Lee. I'm from Orange County, California. State of-- I don't really have much to add to Dr. Kramer and Ms. Rice's presentation. I'm simply here to answer any additional questions you guys might have regarding the design or the purpose of the facility.
So if you're going to follow somebody's coattails, that's probably a good person to follow.
I would think so, yes.
I see that. All right, so with that, any questions from the commissioners? I just had one. What's the material? Again, I'm assuming, but what's the material that the structure is made of?
It's going to be a RF-- I'm sorry. It's going to be a faux kind of design that's going to mimic the brick of what's already on there.
That's why I figured. I think Dr. Kramer has a comment.
The material itself is called FRP, which stands for fiberglass reinforced plastic, and that is used because it can be colored to look like anything, molded to look like anything, but it allows the radio waves to go through it as if it were transparent.
Can the church expand their cross and put it on that material, or does it pretty much have to be, and nothing they can affix to it?
The issue is that whatever is supporting the antennas, it has to be able to physically support the antennas. If you're asking, I'm not sure of the question you're asking.
I know on the outside, there's a cross. I didn't know if they were, they could put something on that, or they have to basically just leave the cross where it is and not affix anything to that new material.
I don't believe the cross is impacted at all, because it's going to be below the level of the FRP.
Yeah, it's not moving.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I have no further questions. I don't see any other hands from commissioners, so I assume there's not. So thank you. At this point, we will then go to public comments, of which we have two, I believe, on Zoom. First, David Asiag, followed by John Winget. David, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, yes. I believe you have five minutes.
Okay, so I've seen the renderings, and according to FCC rules, it looks like it's safe for distance from our home?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
And my other question is, the additional amount of height on the steeple is going to be another 19 feet from the paperwork we got?
All right, so just give us your questions. I'll have the staff get back to you after that. But so your question is, in terms of your home, can you tell us exactly where your address, so they know exactly?
We're at 42 West Avonita de Los Arboles. We have a view of the church right across from our home.
Okay, so those two questions, are there any other comments you have that you want to provide?
You did mention that it's going to be completely covered, but my worry is that it's going to be an eyesore for the properties around the church.
Okay, anything else?
Do you have anything? No, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Again, staff will get back to your comments after we go through the other general comment. So thank you. Next, we have John Winget.
Mr. John Winget is no longer on.
Okay, so that would be the last of the public comments that I see, so I'll go back to staff for response.
Let me, if I may, address the first question, which is Mr. Asiag's question regarding The FCC doesn't use the word "safe" in terms of this. What it looks at is, what we look at is, does it comply with the FCC rules? Because it's not a safety evaluation, it's a compliance evaluation with federal rules which govern our activities at the local level. So again, the closest home that we're aware of is 115 feet. The maximum distance that is transmitted by this site, or will be transmitted by this site, that is controlled by the FCC is 38 feet. Just as kind of a quick primer, when signals leave the antenna, they don't get weaker per se. What they do is they spread out, the inverse square law. So every time you double the distance, you quarter the power. So it's, at 38 feet, that would be the point where the FCC says that's the point where anyone can be exposed for 24/7 and would not exceed the FCC's limit. And just to frame the FCC's limit, when the FCC was creating these rules back in the late '90s, and they're still the current rules today, they said, basically, we have to set a safety margin. We know at some point, the body is affected by RF. And so when they were setting their 100% exposure level for the public, they looked at what other countries were doing, they looked at the military, what the military standards were, they looked at health physicists, they looked at industry standards, and they came up with a standard, and we call it the general population standard. That's the standard where someone can be exposed to RF 24/7 and not even know about it. That level, that maximum level they can be exposed to is 2%, 2% of the level that you can actually measure and affect from RF. So there's a 50 times safety margin built in above that. I don't know if that helps any concerns that the caller had, but to understand the way the rules work, there's a huge safety margin built in, so even if, and it's not going to happen here, but even if the emissions went above that which was projected, there's still a huge safety margin, and it would, at 115 feet, still comply with the FCC's rules.
Any other comments from staff?
Yes, so I'll address the second comment from the public speaker. He questioned whether the addition to the height of the steeple was 19 feet, and just for the record, as was indicated in the presentation, the existing height of the steeple, when you add the extension to the top of it, depending on where you measure it from, if you were to measure the top of the steeple plus the extension, it's only an addition of 10 feet 6 inches.
Okay, thank you. Questions, commissioners for the staff? I think, all right, we have no hands. So at this point, Mr. Lee, if you wanted a response, I'm assuming, if you wanted to make any further response, you can, if you don't want to.
Well, I may chair just, I might need him to come up to the mic in a minute, just in one minute. We had a question regarding the condition number 12, and what I would propose is that we actually break that condition into two parts. The current condition number 12 will be 12A, and then for 12B, we'll just add a condition as being expressed, just for clarity, because as I was reading the supplemental, I also read a double negative. I just want to make sure that we all have clarity, including for the applicant, and he needs to approve this change. So 12B, again, 12, current 12 is going to be 12A. 12B would be, the above-ground equipment that will be installed for this project shall not extend above the height of the new wall enclosure. As for the steeple, no antennas, transmitters, or associated array mounts shall extend above the steeple facade as shown in the submitted plan set. So that would be the change. It would be 12A and 12B. Again, it's really captured that.
No, I understand. That works, yeah.
That's acceptable?
That's acceptable, yes.
Anything further you wanted for rebuttal?
No, not at all. They answered.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, unless there's any further questions from commissioners, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and invite the commissioners for comments or motion. Commissioner Kettlehut?
I'm just, I know, and I appreciate everything that you've given us in terms of what the purview of this is. Aesthetically, I think it's clunky. I don't think it's in keeping with how it looks now. Again, I understand people are mostly driving by, they're not looking directly at it. I just, I think it's, I think it's a clunky extension of the facility.
Any other comments?
Oh, I'm going to respectfully disagree. I thought that it was well-done and well-disguised, and if you can indeed make the top part look like the bottom part, I think it will be fine.
Okay.
So should I make a motion?
If you can.
In that case, I will move that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Class 1, Section 15301, existing facilities of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and number 2, approve wireless communication facility, WCF 2024-7001, to allow the installation of a stealth wireless telecommunication facility within an existing church steeple, and with the modifications of 12A and 12B as discussed.
Great. Commissioner Ferris, did you have any comments?
I'll support the motion. I think that I actually do a gri-- it's been a while since I've been on a case with a wireless communication facility, and some previous ones are, I would argue, more clunky, more hard to deal with. Like, talked about like fake trees and, you know, a variety of other things. The location of the facility is actually quite, you know, separated from an actual residential neighborhood, and as Dr. Kramer has pointed out, sort of that the extension of where the nearest residential property is, is quite well outside the envelope for compliance with FCC guidelines. It is consistent with the intent of the 97-197 resolution. I may have seen harder cases, I guess, that's the case, and for that reason, I'll support the motion.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioner? For me, I think we've had a few of them over the last few years that have kind of gone this steeple route, so to speak, instead of looking to do the palm tree, which always cracks me up, that somehow people think that looks good. This additional top to, I think there was a steeple on Newberry Road we had done, there was the church on, near the back part of the city that we'd done, and it kind of adds additional. This is a little different, and I think I can see your point in terms of just adding a straight part on top of to a straight part that just makes it look like a taller thing. That is a little bit clunky in that regard. I think, though, that given the parameters of our review, it fits within that confines, and I think ultimately, it is the best we can do in that process, so I will support the motion as well. So Madam Secretary, could you please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Link absent.
As this is a decision from the planning commission, I have to read the following. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. That'll end 7A. Let's go to 7B. Madam Secretary, could you please open the public hearing for 7B?
Hearing having been advertised as required by laws hereby open to consider agenda item 7B 2017-0, sorry, 2017-70164, RPMJ, Residential Plan Development Major Modification, 2017-70530-MND Mitigated Negative Declaration, 2017-70308-OTP Oak Tree Permit, and 2017-70309-LTP Landmark Tree Permit, to allow the construction of a four-bedroom, approximately 4,700 square-foot two-story, single-family residence with basement attached garage and associated development permits, including grading on steep slopes, encroachment into the protected zone of 14 oak trees, removal of three oak trees, and removal transplanting of one other protected tree. Hardscape and landscape for an existing 15.88 acre property located at a vacant lot at 3948 Skelton Canyon Circle, with a general plan land use designation of neighborhood Very Low, Zoned Residential Plan Development RPD-1.5 Use, specific plan number 4, Westlake, North Ranch, and to adopt the California Environmental Quality-- and to adopt the California Environmental Quality, SEQA Mitigated Negative Declaration and Associated Mitigation and Monitoring Reporting, Reporting Program. The applicant is Patricia Faruza, Toscana Enterprises LLC.
I see Ms. Rice moved to chair down to allow Senior Planner Justine Kendall to present for the staff.
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners, members of the public. The presentation before you, so sorry, is a request to construct a new single-family residence at 3948 Skelton Canyon Circle. The applicant requests that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve the applications just mentioned. The project is before the planning commission due to encroachment into steep slopes and removal of protected trees. In addition, approval of a mitigated negative declaration is required due to the presence of sensitive habitat area on-site. The project site is part of a 296 lot residential subdivision that was approved by the City Council in 1976 through RPD 75-136 and Tentative Tract 2343. Subsequent to Tentative Tract Map approval, the developer at that time elected to partially grade this lot in conjunction with tract development, leaving an existing flat pad on the site today. In August of 1980, the planning commission at that time approved a request to encroach into 25% or greater natural slope area for the construction of a 5,000 square foot single-family dwelling and private access bridge that was never built. The subject property is a vacant and irregularly shaped lot of about 15.88 acres in size. The property located on the west side of Westlake Boulevard is the last remaining vacant lot on the terminus of Skelton Canyon Circle and has direct access from the street. An existing trail crosses the property on the western side and is located approximately 720 feet west of the proposed residence. The project site has varying topography with areas of 25% or greater natural slope. The majority of the subject property is designated as a restricted use area to preserve the natural slope environment and hillside areas in compliance with the goals and policies of the general plan. The proposed development area was cited to take advantage of the existing graded pad, which I'll discuss more in a minute, in order to minimize disturbing sensitive habitat areas, including protected oak tree groves. The proposed tri-level residence would have a footprint of approximately 2,500 square feet with a total conditioned space of 4,101 square feet, as well as a 608 square foot two-car attached garage. The residence will be served by a 290-foot driveway from the terminus of Skelton Canyon Circle. It will have four bedrooms, a 644 square foot basement, that will serve as a multipurpose room, as well as a deck, swimming pool, and spa. In addition to the garage, two parking spaces are provided within the motor court that also serves as a fire department turnaround. The proposed residence is located within a neighborhood that has a mix of single and two-story homes. The proposed home utilizes a split-level design with a second-floor element, consistent with other homes in the area. The design of the home has received preliminary approval from the Architectural Committee of the Westlake-North Ranch Homeowners Association. The proposed building incorporates gable and flat roof elements that provide horizontal and vertical interest. Materials for the building include corporate tile roof, concrete tile roofing, as well as a metal roof on architectural elements, stone veneer, stucco, and windows that include contemporary contrasting framing. The tallest portion of the building will be at 25 feet in height as measured from the existing natural grade. In actual practice, it will be about 20 feet from the final grade. The project height has, or the project site has a Neighborhood Very Low residential designation in the land use element of the general plan and is currently zoned RPD 1.5U or Specific Plan, and is located within the Westlake-North Ranch Specific Plan or Specific Plan Number 4. The RPD zoning density is not proposed to change with the project and is consistent with the general plan. Single-family dwellings and accessory uses such as decks, balconies, swimming pools, parking spaces, et cetera, are allowed uses in the RPD zone. In addition, the project adheres to the requirements of Tentative Tract 2343 and RPD 1975-136, which also comply with the North Ranch Specific Plan. Therefore, the project as designed meets the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Development Standards as seen in this table. In order to preserve the greatest number of oak trees, the driveway meanders off-site slightly onto the adjacent property owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Emergency vehicle and fire department turnarounds are provided at the middle of the driveway and adjacent to the residence within the motor court. In addition, the driveway is lined with a low retaining wall to shield the neighboring property from any incoming headlight glare. Due to existing site conditions and constraints, encroachment into 25% natural slope terrain for the proposed dwelling is unavoidable. However, the area of encroachment would not result in a negative visual impact as viewed from a street, as it is located at the base of the slope behind the proposed residence. The proposed development is located within the flattest portion of the property, thereby reducing encroachment into slopes greater than 25%. The design takes advantage of the previously graded pad in order to avoid further alterations into the terrain or impacting sensitive habitat area or the need for excessive manufactured slopes. The total amount of grading associated will be about 3.3% of the total 15.88 acre lot area, leaving approximately 97% of the lot in a natural undisturbed condition. The proposed grading would require a cut and fill of 750 cubic yards and 1,400 cubic yards respectively, with a total import of 650 cubic yards of earth. If approved, the applicant will be required to provide a hall route and management plan to the Public Works Department for review and approval prior to commencing grading activities pursuant to the conditions of approval. To reduce the impact of grading, again, the applicant has incorporated a split-level two-story design with the building set into the slope as seen here, utilizing internal and external retaining walls in lieu of a normal graded pad-type design. While the project has been designed to minimize impacts on sensitive resources, including steep slopes, protected trees, and sensitive habitat areas, 18 of the 30 protected trees in the immediate development area would be impacted, with one being proposed for transplanting, three for removal, and 14 others being encroached upon and pruned for structural and brush clearance. The oak tree preservation and protection ordinance allows for oak tree encroachments, pruning, and removals if the request is not contrary to the purpose and intent of the ordinance. In this case, although the driveway was carefully designed to avoid impacting as many trees as possible, Ventura County Fire Department requirements invoke the need to prune two of the trees to such a degree that removal is required. A third will be removed, as the fire department requires at least 10 feet of the clearance between the tree drip line and the proposed residence. The proposed house could not be sighted in a way that it would avoid displacing this tree without incurring significantly more encroachment into the steep slope and sensitive habitat areas. One other tree, shown in this image in blue, will be transplanted as it is in the path of the proposed driveway and could not be avoided. As such, the removals are necessary for reasonable use of the land. In addition, a condition of approval requires the removed trees to be replaced at a 3-to-1 ratio. A landscape plan check and replacement tree plan will be required to review and approve the location of the replacement trees. Other appropriate project conditions are in place to safeguard the oak trees, including installation of fencing around the protected zones and onsite monitoring by the applicant's consultant during all encroachment and pruning operations. Please note also that the resolution originally included in the agenda packet for this evening mistakenly stated a replacement ratio of 2 to 1, as well as several other typographical errors, my apologies. A revised resolution was circulated as part of the supplemental packet shared this afternoon. As a biological assessment conducted by Ford Biological concluded that a handful of special status species had low to high potential to occur within the area, the project did not qualify for an exemption under SEQA, and an initial study or mitigated negative declaration was conducted. With the mitigation measures included, the project has been determined to have a less-than-significant impact on biological and tribal-cultural resources. All other issue areas were determined to incur a less-than-significant impact without mitigation measures. The SEQA findings for the MND and mitigation measures from the MND are incorporated into the project resolution as well. It is staff's recommendation to adopt a resolution as revised approving the final MND and subject applications. The revised resolution was provided again as part of the supplemental packet and should be further revised as well to edit Page 1, Section 1, Part 3 of that revised PC resolution to change 2 to 1 to 3 to 1 in reference to the required replacement tree ratio. I, as well as other city staff, are available for questions and clarification.
Thank you. Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Kettlehead?
What kind of, with respect to the next-door neighbor, what kind of mitigation plan is in, is, is in effect for the drainage?
I can have Jim Taylor come up and speak to that in more concrete detail. That would be acceptable?
Who was asking the question? What was your question specifically?
Just want to find out what kind of mitigation plan is, is in effect with respect to the drainage and the next-door neighbor.
Okay. Condition number 127 in your resolution actually speaks to that. The Public Works Department and the Community Development Department will be working with the city attorney to ensure that proper vegetation is provided, to stabilize the slopes that are out there now. Also, all of the drainages will be designed so that they will disperse the runoff, so as everything gets collected on the roof, put into a pipe, it'll be discharged in a safe manner so that it's dispersed and won't be causing erosion on the streams and other natural surfaces.
Any other questions? No. Commissioner McMahon?
The trees that are going to be replaced, are they going to be planted on-site?
That's the intention, yes. One of the conditions of approval is to provide a tree replacement plan, as well as a habitat replacement plan for any habitat, special status habitats that is removed, and that will need to be reviewed by the city, as well as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay. My other question was about the trees that have been, that are going to be affected. I saw the list of them, they were all, I think almost all of them rated A, and, and by affected, they're going to be trimmed above the road so that fire trucks could get through? Is that what's going to be happening?
That's right. The driveway was carefully designed to avoid impacting trees as much as possible. One of the fire department requirements that came on later on during project review was the amount of clearance required, so some of the trees will need to be trimmed to provide, I believe it's 13 and 1/2 feet of clearance for any fire vehicles coming down that driveway.
And is the theory that because they're all very, very healthy, rated A, that they will survive and still thrive the trimming?
That's right, and some of the trimming is very minimal as well.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. Can, I get an understanding, sort of the reason why we're here tonight is that there's a few challenges with respect to this particular property. One is there are protected trees of certain sizes that require evaluation to understand whether we can encroach upon them or need to remove them. The second is that there is a, a number of areas that are excess of 25% natural slope. And the third is, there was an original approval for this, and the developer kind of like made a test, you know, grading area, but then nothing happened as a result of it, so they're taking advantage of, of that as the location. You know, and on the grading slope analysis plan, there are green areas that show that it's less than 25% in purple, that, at least I think I got the colors right, that are in excess. Can, can you help, help me, or, and the public, just kind of understand the evaluation of why here versus any of the other places, given that there's, it sounds like there's going to be some impact of a number of those areas regardless of, of where we are? Is that a fair evaluation?
Sure. So I'll start by agreeing with you that this property is quite complicated, and the applicant has had to go through quite an extensive amount of review to deal with all of those different factors. You mentioned the steep slopes, sensitive habitat area, the trees, et cetera, the, the arroyo as well. The grading that occurred on the site was part of the grading for the original tract. There was a subsequent approval after that for a home that was never built, but the, the grading that had happened was part of the tract, not for that subsequent approval. In, in an effort to minimize any additional disturbance on the property, the majority of the house, you can, you can see here that most of the proposed development is occurring on that flat, we'll call it mint, area, with the others occurring in that purple, that's the steep area. As you can see here, it's pretty impossible to avoid any steep slope encroachment, especially given the amount of fire department turnaround that's required. That's that kind of square rectangle-looking thing in the lower left corner of the property there. In addition to the restricted use area that surrounds the property as well, that is another constraint too. So the, the property is located here because that is the best way to avoid additional impacts from what may have already occurred. And I'll also say too, that this tries to take advantage of the fuel modification zones that are, are, the brush clearance that's already occurring because of the neighboring property.
Okay. Thanks for talking through that in the evaluation. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to save mine because they're more for the applicant, but we'll come back. With that, let's go to the applicant. I believe, speaking of the applicant, is Tom Oswald. You'll have 15 minutes for your presentation. Please say your name and city of residence. Oh, sorry, one more time, I hit the button.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Oswald, Thousand Oaks. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight representing Patricia and her family for this custom home. She did pick a very difficult site, as we all know, if you've been out there, but it's actually a very beautiful site, and she fell in love with the oak trees and just the natural setting. Challenging, yes, challenging to put a house with all the restrictions that come with this lot. Simple, when you think about it, when you add the layer of restrictions to where you can actually locate the house. So if, again, I can go over some of those restrictions. Justine did a very good job in, in talking about them. As you come up the driveway on the northern part of the property, we have to have a fire department turnaround. So that pushed the house south about 60 feet, and so that obviously is something we couldn't avoid. Obviously, we want this fire safe, and actually is a benefit to the neighbor to the north because now fire equipment can get deep into that area to fight fires, which is included in that driveway. That driveway had all kinds of regulations and stipulations with the Woosley Fire and all the new high-fire regulations. We had to extend the driveway in width to 15, it was normally 12. We had to get a different radius, we had to do a turnout. All this came up, actually, after we started the design process, so then we had to adjust our plan accordingly. There's an oak tree that we avoided tearing down, taken out, because it was in the middle of the driveway access. By getting an easement from the HOA, that allowed us to avoid that oak tree. Patricia loves the oak trees, doesn't want anything to do with harming or removing them, that's why she bought the lot. Unfortunately, if you look on the eastern side, that's where the arroyo is, and that's where the oak trees are, with this new fire department regulation that requires 10 feet separation from any tree limb, outskirts of the limb, to any structure. There was no way we could trim it enough to make it work to where we could actually get our house on the pad without removal of the tree. If you trim a tree enough, it's not going to be safe. We don't want that. So we had to remove two of the trees that overhung the particular pad. So that was a restriction on one side. We also have the hill on, on the western side. There's a requirement in Public Works and Safety that we have to be 15 feet from the base of that slope for our structure. that we have to be 15 feet from the base of that slope for our structure. So that pushed the house in another direction. So on three sides, we really had restrictions. And that really made the house sit in a particular location. We also did a basement to get some square footage and allowed for a very smaller footprint to happen. So we could go more vertical. So we did some interesting things to shoehorn it in, but I think we did a good job aesthetically. Fire safety is definitely a premium on this lot because it's located amongst all the oak trees. And also, we didn't want to impact that hill. And so in doing so, we ended up with the design that you see today. So if you have any questions?
So let me go to the Commissioners here and see if there's any questions of the applicant. They didn't, I have a few. So I'm going to ask you a question. Again, it's not intended to mean anything except it's a question I ask every single time somebody wants to come build something. Is the goal really to build this or is it just to get the approval for the permits to improve it and then sell it?
No, this is a family home. Like I said, she fell in love with that lot. She's gone through thousands of dollars to get this to the point where it is today. She plans to live there with her family.
Yes, I was noticing, again, the original application was 2017. Looks like then it wasn't renewed and then it was ultimately renewed later on. Again, hard times right now, insurance is really, really tough. Cost per square foot to build is really, really high. I'm just, again, that's why I'm asking the question. Is this really intended to build it or is this just to get the improvements done?
Yeah, it's, again, this is a personal home. This is somebody that probably wouldn't build this unless they were personally involved with this lot. There's just too much. Matter of fact, the person that had the lot before this, I was the architect on that. It took too long for them to flip it. They were developers and they walked away. Once they saw what was involved, here today, we have 151 conditions on this lot for environmental, for fire. It's just too much for a developer. But if you're personally involved and it's a personal thing, you'll go a little extra mile and pay a little bit more to make it happen.
And to that extent, I'm not going to ask the question. I'm hoping you actually can even get insurance. That's my other concern.
Well, that'll be something that she'll be facing as well as everybody else. But with the way we're developing the actual building itself, it far exceeds any normal fire codes in terms of the material, the fire sprinklers. We have a pool that we're going to use also for fire safety. So with all of that, hopefully the insurance companies will start writing lower for people who abide by these stringent rules.
From ear, mouth to God's ear for all of us. The other question, again, with all of that in mind is I initially, when I was reading this, I didn't see the plan. I expected a much larger house. Is this something you're going to stick with this or is there some point in time you may actually have a different?
No. Again, you can't really put much larger house on this lot. That's where the basement came in. That's, you know, we didn't want to encroach on the neighbor in terms of the second floor. They have a view up the valley going to the south. That's where light comes in. If you, you know, it really is important for us not to impact our neighbor. So the second floor is pushed way over to the eastern part of the property. So they still have a valley from their backyard to the south. So, no, this is it.
And there was a comment with regard to the three to one tree replacement. Is there an intent to put the replaced trees on the property?
This is something we haven't discussed exactly where since there's so many oak trees already. But it's something that maybe if the neighbor is interested to see more shielding, you know, maybe that can be discussed as a way of appeasing the neighbors in terms of the trees that we are removing.
Okay. And then my last question, and this is again a standard question. Are you and the applicant agreeable with all the terms and conditions that were provided in the report?
Well, we haven't gotten to the nitty gritty in concept, yes. But we would like to read a little bit more thoroughly and review it with what some of the ramifications of some of these conditions are. But in concept, yes.
So I'll ask, I mean, it sounds like you may need a continuance in order to make sure you understand those conditions because part of us approving this tonight has to be that you are in agreement with those conditions, in my understanding.
Right. Well, I'll discuss that with the applicant. We've got these revisions short notice. So there's some aspect to some of the reviews and the biological studies we have to do on each phase of this particular project.
I totally understand. But again, my own understanding is that unless you are agreeable with these terms and conditions, it's not something we can vote on tonight. Would that be accurate?
That is accurate, Chair.
Yeah, we thought, in condition, I think it's, it says that we sign off on these conditions, number 23, before we grade, before we pull permits. So I was just asking, you know, that we have a chance before, obviously, before we pull permits and those kind of things, we will sign off on conditions. There's no doubt about it. There's just 151 conditions. So we've read a lot of them because we've got a lot of them ahead of time. But then there's a lot that we need a little bit more time to research. But it's up to the applicant to respond. If you can't vote tonight because of that, I think she's waited almost two years to get to this point.
Totally understand that. But again, the issue being is I don't think we can vote on something that you haven't agreed to.
Okay.
So I don't know where we go from here.
No, that is correct. So if you need to take a little time just to review any additional conditions that you have. But for tonight, if they're approving this, it would be an approval of the project with the conditions as stated.
Right.
If there's any changes to those, we would need to discuss those tonight. So you can say yes and staff can chime in if they need to chime in. For example, there might be a condition that is mandated by fire department, for example, that they won't be able to change or wouldn't recommend changing.
Oh, no.
Those are the type of things that we need to make sure we clear up tonight.
So is this something where you want to take, you want to take a few minutes to?
Let me take a few minutes. I'll get right back to you. Thank you so much.
All right. So we'll take a five minute break. Come back at, well, let's make it 7:15. And we're back. Mr. Oswald, you want to come back to the podium? And we'll resume our question of the conditions that we provided. Is the applicant in agreement with those conditions?
Yeah, she can come up here and confirm, but yes, she's, she will approve the conditions as written.
My understanding is that you are her authorized representative. So we're just fine if she feels comfortable doing that. But at the end of the day, it's assumed that your comments will be in representation of the applicant.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your patience, but yes, we're in agreement.
Okay, all right. With that, then, I will then go to, thank you. I will go to the public comment, which I believe we have one here. Martin Fentress, who I believe you submitted a document, but please come up. You will have five minutes. Well, wait, wait till you get to the, wait till you get to the podium. Please give us your name and your city of residence.
My name is Martin Fentress. I am the owner of the property adjacent to 3948. I've lived there, I've owned that property since 1993. I have numerous concerns about the, not only the project, but the planning commission with a, over the years, this is about the fourth or fifth time someone's tried to build here. The last time, the people wanted to build a one-story house, but extend. And the planning commission said, oh, no, no, no. We'll make it a two-story. You get the same square footage and won't be able to encroach farther south. And I felt that was way above what the planning commissioner should have been doing. They also, there's a, a thing to, where he could have set up a driveway from the cul-de-sac, there's an easement that they could have built a bridge over. And the planning commission told, oh, we told them no because there's been 35 years of growth since then. Well, we're talking 400 to 650-year-old trees in that area. So 35, 40 years of growth is not a big deal. But I am concerned about, I've had to deal with numerous problems since 93 where people thought this was open air conservancy property, people trying to camp there. So now we're going to have a building there. And I know in LA, when you got a major project, you have to fence it. And I'm hoping that you guys will also require them to be fencing because there, people are going to want to, you know, stroll through the property, you know, and they go down my driveway. That's an issue. When I, the last time we talked about a previous thing, they were talking about the hill is unstable about 20 feet past my property on into their property. And the planning commissioner, the planning man who, at planning, said that that was probably going to cost as much as building the house to get that land stable. During the rains last year, which we've never had rains as far as I can remember, we had a water problem where the water coming down the hill started moving mud on that side of the, the other side of the fence for me and a little bit on my side. It needs a culvert to divert the water. There's also the issue of, this is property that, first of all, it's kind of historical property. If you don't know, that's where the first Renaissance Fair was, was on that property there. But on top of that, it's never been built on. So guess what's going to happen when they start disturbing the land? We're going to have ants, bees, ground squirrels, a variety of animals that are going to, rats that are going to infiltrate into my property. So I'm hoping that one of your conditions will be that they have to provide, you know, animal, you know, environment controls. But I also have concerns about the promise of the trees seeing that we already, I already had to call the city when the new owner went in and started cutting oak trees without permission. And I had to get the city out here to get them to stop. That worries me. If someone's willing to break the rules right off the bat, how do I know they'll continue to, you know, with the rules after they finish? So anyway, that's, there's a lot of things I really worried about, worried about. You know, I bought this property because it looks like it lived in a forest and it sounds like it's going to be pretty much devastated. Those trees are, you know, like I say, they're 400 to 650 years old. Yeah, some of them, mine actually, my 650 year, a couple of years ago, fell over. When you start trimming oak trees and you're trimming one side, it makes the tree unstable, resulting in the tree falling over. And we had, one year, we had one of the branches of one of the bigger oak trees break off and it was hollow and it was just completely full of bees. And we had a big giant swarm at that time. So there's a lot of, a lot of concerns here that I don't see. I got to say, Mr. Chairman, I did appreciate the fact that you were at least talking about not approving until you verified they were going to do everything. That was good. But, did I miss anything? I mean, I did send in a document, so.
We have that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, I believe that's the only public comment I have. I know we did have one other.
Do you have someone on Zoom?
Oh, we do. Oh, we do.
Yes, we have a hand raised on Zoom for Dave Denny's.
Mr. Denny's, are you there? Mr. Denny's.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my name is Dave Denny's. I live at 3942 Skeleton Canyon Circle. My house looks directly into that 600-year heritage oak, and just to its side is about a 400-year oak. And within that slope, if you would have come down to our cul-de-sac, and you would have looked down it, that grade or that slope, because I got on one side and then the other side, there's about a 20-foot difference between one side of that slope and the other side of that slope. And I don't see if, you know, as far as putting concrete and trucks over those roots, there, you're going to guarantee you're going to kill those big oaks, the ones that matter, versus the ones, like Marty said, were only 45 years old. And I could easily see that slope going. I could easily see at least three oak trees dying from what this person is going to do, or what they are trying to do. Now, as I understand it, the city government is, it's your duty to protect and preserve these oaks. And I'm, I, like Marty, I'm very concerned about what's going on in this process, and I feel lack of transparency. I do not feel prepared for this right now. I didn't have time to get together my points the way I would like to. I felt rushed. I, we didn't get the notice that, you know, we don't look at the sign every day. We had like seven days to get ready for this. This afternoon, when I got home at 5:00, I went to four of my neighbors, the Calagery's, oh God, I can't remember, any four neighbors, and I asked them what their thoughts were. And they said, oh, I didn't know anything about this. I go, well, you should have got something about. No, I didn't get anything. Well, I explained it to them, and they said, because I didn't know whether to come on and, I didn't know if anybody else was mad, but I'm glad Marty's mad too. But they were upset. So just the one, two, three, four, five neighbors that matter the most, we're quite concerned. We're quite concerned. And my question is, you know, you, you talk about this mitigation and stuff. Who did the mitigation report? Who did it? You guys know? Can they hear me?
We can hear you. Just go ahead and make your comments, and then we'll have the staff respond to them. Go ahead.
Okay.
You have two minutes.
You know, how many have they done? Has the company had any local mitigation projects that you can review? And then the other thing is, why wasn't this made public to everybody? I, I, I just can't get that. I talked to, I forget who I talked to, but she said you only have two weeks' notice, and I said, well, that's a, for something this important, we didn't get it to a very short period of time, so we, I feel like I'm not prepared. And I hope that our, just to summarize, I believe I have a minute left. That driveway and the slope of that area, I beg you to come over there and get on one side and the other side, and then tell me, and then walk up, which I've done a million times, through those oaks, how you can put a driveway and 5,000-pound trucks going through that many old impressive oaks, in Thousand Oaks, and there not a lot left? I've been here since 1960. I went to St. Pascal's. I went to Thousand Oaks High School. I played baseball at Cal-Lu. I grew up here. This whole thing, very upsetting, and some of the stuff, the, when the other people talking, they kind of sanitized a lot of stuff, and I, you know, I, I think there's a lot going on, and I think you guys have a lot to think about.
Okay, thank you. I think that is the last public speaker. With that, we'll go back to the staff and Ms. Kendall.
Trying to think of where to start here. So I'll start from what we just heard and move backwards, the, and to confirm the project was properly noticed. The project has been noticed several times at the beginning of the application period several years ago, and again, this year as well, earlier this year, the notice of intent was published for the MND, and the notice of hearing was published two weeks ago, I believe that's when Mr. Denny's got the notice he confirmed with me on the phone last week that he had received that when it was sent out, and the poster has also been on site for quite some time. The mitigation, the MND, including the MMRP, the mitigation, monitoring and reporting program, was conducted with the help of consulting firm Elevated Entitlements. Their representative is here today and can speak more to their process and qualifications if desired. I will defer to Mr. Taylor to speak a little bit more about slope stability measures and drainage and mud blow and things like that. The, the condition 127, which he already mentioned, does require slope stability measures to be in place. He, I again will reinforce that Mr. Taylor did a very thorough review of this project because it is complicated and next to the Arroyo and things like that, so he has extensively reviewed the drainage issues in this area. And the driveway slopes and things like that will be reviewed again during the building plan check process. I believe that addresses all of the most recent concerns we heard. I want to say, in addition, this doesn't speak to any concerns expressly stated, but there will be pre-construction meetings required with the neighbors prior to grading and ground disturbance, so the neighbors will be notified when that, when eventually the shovels hit the dirt, so to speak. That shouldn't be a surprise, and it should be disclosed to them. There is a condition required for rodent control plan, so that is submitted to the city, and we review that prior to ground disturbance, to make sure that they do have a plan to control any rodents that may be on site. There are also, I'll mention, specific mitigation measures for rodents of special concern, so the ones that we care about and love are also to be protected, so there is special control measures for them as well. The conditions of approval are enforced depending on the type of condition that they are, so many of them have to be met before grading permits are even issued, or building permits are issued. And in regards to oak trees, there's ongoing monitoring that is required, as well as a post-construction certification that needs to occur. The, in regards to fencing, construction security fencing is required. There is a condition of approval, which requires that of a certain height and size. There's also protective fencing around the oak trees and the protected trees themselves, so that's additional fencing which is required. It's not recommended or would be supported to fence the perimeter of the property, because this is an open space adjacent area, and wildlife needs to be able to move about freely. There is also a trail which will be dedicated on the property, and so that needs to be usable. And then Mr. Taylor can also speak to, if desired, that fencing doesn't help erosion control, and it can impact debris in a certain way that it would be negative, so we, we wouldn't recommend that, but construction fencing is indeed a required condition of approval. And there is also a lighting plan requirement, so we can look to the lighting plan to give us guidance on other security measures and things like that. I heard about security people trespassing and camping and things like that. Having a house on this property would help alleviate much of that trespassing issue, but we can look to the lighting as well to help manage that kind of issue. Anything I left off before I hand the mic to Mr. Taylor?
I actually pushed the button to make the microphone go. How about that? The first speaker had several comments that were kind of up my alley there. As Justine just mentioned, there is a concern about putting fencing up. What happens in the event of a, of a solid, strong storm event is that a lot of vegetation becomes uprooted, and if you have posts and fencing elements that are put up, they will tend to accumulate vegetation as the runoff brings it to the fence. And so if you do that, then the water has to find another way to get through, and it usually ends up concentrated, it starts to rill the soil, and you end up with flow paths that weren't there before, because it used to be nice and flat and open and sheet flowing. So we don't want to put a fence up. That's a, that's a bad idea. As far as the hillside being unstable and the rains that were experienced last year, I have to agree that the events were really extraordinary. We had some really unusually strong rainfall events, in addition to having very saturated soils. And so those two combinations will have, again, the effect of loosening vegetation and sediments, and you'll end up with them coming down in gushes of mud or at least cappuccino-colored runoff. The mitigation program that was mentioned in condition number 27 will be worked upon that will include not only physical drainage structures, which are mentioned in there, specifically it says drainage appurtenances that are protecting the slopes from erosive stormwater runoff. They'll actually be protecting the homes more than anything else, but there's an existing V-ditch out there, I think everybody has seen, that may have to be bolstered with a downstream slumpstone block that will actually help to increase the carrying capacity and be able to intercept and divert flows along that existing V-ditch. And then further down to pass through the existing, the proposed site here. There'll also be a consideration for appropriate native vegetation to be included. Those vegetations, because they are native, tend to have stronger root systems and will cling to the soil in a much more effective manner during heavy rains, so you'll have less in the way of sediment migration and vegetative loss. So we'll be gripping the soil, basically. So those two measures, I think, are the primaries that are mentioned in that condition, and of course, that gets reviewed by both the community development department as well as the city attorney's office.
There's just one other thing I wanted to mention, and now that I can read my own handwriting. The, there was expressed, our concern expressed regarding the driveway and the impacts to trees and the roots in particular, and we share that concern as well, as did both the city arborists and the applicant arborist. The driveway is to be constructed in a particular way to protect those root systems, and that's been reviewed by the public works department and the arborist as well. And that is, will allow drainage and the load on the roots to be dispersed so that they, they, the trees should be able to survive, and that's the whole reason why the driveway was designed in this way.
Before I get to Commissioner questions, I want to kind of get a little clarity on two things both of you have said with regard to fencing, because you, Mr. Taylor said that there wouldn't be fencing, I'm assuming as the entire property, and then you were talking about there would be fencing as to the construction area. So where would there be fencing and where wouldn't there be?
So I think there, there would be temporary construction fencing around the project area, the area to be disturbed. There will not be any permanent fencing, other than what already exists.
And there would be fencing around the protected trees or the ones that are going to be remaining?
Yes, and there will be fencing around the protected trees as required by the tree report.
Just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so anything further? From staff?
I actually would like to also include that there was a notice of intent to, for the preparation of the mitigative negative declaration that was also sent to all the property owners, and also the documents were posted in the city's website, and that was the public review comment was for 30 days, which was from February 5th, 2024, and ended in March 6th, 2024. And that was another opportunity for public comment.
Okay, anything further from staff?
Not at this time.
We will then go to Commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner McMan?
Excuse me, do you happen to remember the sign that was placed on the property on that cul-de-sac? Was it two weeks? Was it longer? Was it shorter time?
The sign has been up, I'm thinking, at least three years.
Three years? So there was three years' notice that something was going on?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is about the tract itself. When the other houses on the cul-de-sac were built, was that lot always zoned, scheduled? Was it always a lot for a residence?
Yes.
So, so when the residences, when the people who bought, purchased the other houses that are standing now purchased it, they knew that there might someday be a house on that lot?
I can't really speak to what they may or may not have known, but that lot has always been zoned for a residence, yes.
That was my question, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Nothing? Commissioner Kelleherd, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. So my, my biggest concern for the neighbors is articulated by Mr. Fentress and Mr. Denny's, again, dealt a lot with drainage and, and anything that could be happening to your property. And now, having, you know, heard from the, the chief engineer, as well as looking at number 121, and which, by the way, this, this is a contract. When, when Mr. Lanson said to the applicant, do you agree to this? We take it very seriously, as this is a city that has been working on this for a long, long, long time, that this is a contract between the applicant and the city, and, and if she violates that contract, well, then it's, it's actionable, it's actionable. And so, something that I would suggest, this is, this is all part of the public record. So I would absolutely suggest getting, getting a copy of it and, and taking a look at it. But I'm feeling a lot better when I'm looking at number 32, number 121, 127, dealing with the slope protection plan, the drainage study, and, and what they're going to be required to do to protect you. And so that, that gives me much more comfort in terms of assessing this. So I just wanted to mention that.
Any other questions of staff? The, the slope that's there, does it, again, we're looking, I'm looking at 127 in terms of the slope protection. Does this slope protection apply only to, what area does it apply to specifically? 127 in terms of the slope protection, is it just, I mean, the whole area is a slope? I'm trying to find out, does that apply to the entirety of the area? Westerly slope.
The slope protection is to, basically to prepare, to protect the homes that are out there, including the existing homes. As you might imagine, a terrace drain or a V-ditch that runs behind on a slope, when there's so many acres coming down toward it, that kind of runoff is, is not going to be caught by this V-ditch. If it, if the V-ditch is full of soil, the water will just pass right over it. If the wa, if the V-ditch is empty but full of water, the water will just pass right over it. So some sort of physical change will have to be made to mitigate that drainage concern. What was described in experience with the mud flows, completely plausible, probably expected, because you've got an enormous amount of acreage coming down behind these homes. So that's why we had to write this condition number 127, to make sure that we took care of both the immediate concern behind the homes, as well as trying to stabilize whatever slopes are being disturbed. So we're going to be putting in better vegetation that'll be more effective at holding the root systems that will penetrate and hold the sediment back, all within the brush clearance zone. That'll be pretty much our limit, I believe, because otherwise, it's disturbed area that you're not supposed to mess with, the riparian or whatever you would call it, the native slopes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I did, I was looking for clarification, because that's a huge issue, especially, you know, not that I want anything bad to happen, but if we have any kind of fire that gets rid of that vegetation, it's even more problematic. So that's a huge requirement, so that's why I want to make sure to kind of make it clear what that was. So thank you. I have no other questions of staff? Not seeing any. Awek, Commissioner Kelleherd?
So you just made me think of something else. So you just made me think of something else. So in terms of, and maybe this will, this will help Mr. Fentress and Mr. Denny's. When your homes were originally built, probably in the 60s, early 70s, with those V ditches, because I happened to live in a Jants home that had those V ditches with a huge slope behind me. With what's coming in now, with what's being proposed now, there's so much more protection than what would have been there before. So that, I'm hoping that might give you some comfort in knowing that what, what is coming is a lot better than what was there before in terms of protecting the land, your land, her land and, and what, what flows below it.
So at this point, the applicant has rebuttal time if they'd like, five minutes to address anything further?
Basically, I think everything has been covered. I think it's covered in all the conditions. Jim Taylor's been in this business of flood control and waterways for a very long time. I assure you, he's going to make us do what we have to do to make this safe. I have no doubt about it. So other than that, I think you're going to find that developing this property is going to make the surrounding properties more fire safe as well as flood safe. I have no doubt about it. Yeah. 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 Yeah, we've already done a lot of analysis in regards to the site with hydrology and other things that Jim asked us to do. So it's, it's been a process and it's not something that we've overlooked at all. Thank you.
One second. Any other questions from Commissioners of the applicant? Seeing none, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this point and open up to Commissioner comments or motion. Can't make it myself. Commissioner Kettlehead?
I'll make the motion. Let's hope I do it right. All right, I would move that the, that we find and adopt a resolution attachment for, based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained therein. One, approving the MND 2017-70530-MND and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. And two, approving 2017-70164-RPMJ, 2017-70308-0TP, and 2017-70309-LTP. Do I add the rest? And then I'm going to say the above recommendations. The above recommendations are made in association with the project plans dated May 1, 2024, attachment number five, and protected tree report dated March 28, 2024, attachment six.
And Chair, if I may, I, I want to make sure for clarity that your motion includes the supplemental changes that were introduced and noticed tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Is that it?
No.
Okay. Commissioner McMan?
Well, I want to first address the neighbors. I, I do feel for you. Nobody wants to live near construction, especially I know your cul-de-sac is small and, and I know it's going to be very inconvenient and there's going to be messes and it's, it's, it's not going to be pleasant and I feel really bad about that. But I feel that the fire department has gone over these plans. I feel that our city engineering staff know what they're doing. I feel like every consideration has been made for this lot and for this property. And although not a great experience for you guys, it will be over. And the applicant has done everything they have been asked and they do have a right to build on their property. So I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferris?
Yes, one, I just wanted to get one clarification also is that, did the motion also include the additional revision that was stated at the end of the staff presentation for two to one to three to one?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to double check because it wasn't in the supplemental packet, but that was also an addition. I, these are hard, but I'm at a point where I'll support the motion. I, I want to be really clear, Mr. Fentress and Mr. Denny's, I think, have, have brought comments which are common from residences, residents, and they look to us to hear them and make sure that we're trying to make the best decision possible, given what we have in front of us. The property itself is designated under general plan as neighborhood, very low density residential. It's RPD, 1.5 units under the specific plan. So if they are looking for reasonable use of the property, we're in a position where we have to figure out how to meet the conditions of the zone and provide, I would argue, the least impactful project, given the nature of all the things that are in front of us on the, on the property. There are probably a couple other places where a pad could be put on that would not encroach into as much 25% natural slope, but you would probably take out more oak trees as a result of it. Or there might be more cut and fill that would be needed to do that. And for that reason, that's why it becomes challenging for us. We could say no, but what that then means is have we denied the reasonable use of the property? And if, you know, it gets challenged in some fashion, we could have something far worse than what our staff has tried to make sure best aligns in the least impactful way with our standards in the community of protecting the natural slopes and, and the protected trees. So for that reason, I think the best decision is to support the application as has been presented. So I'll vote yes.
I want to actually thank the applicant and all the time and effort you put into this. I know it was a long time. This is a difficult property. It's not, not simple. In fact, we've had a lot of those recently on Skyline and other that try to, try to do an amazing thing with what they have. This is going to be a difficult process and that's why it was a little hard and I'm sorry, Mr. Oswald, if I was a little hard on you with regard to my questions, but this is a difficult property to build on for so many reasons. And not only in terms of just what we're going through tonight, but the practical reality of insurance and housing costs. I mean, I think it's up to 1,200 bucks a square foot. That, you know, it is so difficult, but with all of that, I, complete word for word, I agree with what Commissioner Ferris said on every single aspect of that process. You have that entitlement. At the end of the day though, this, the burden before you is, is immense. And, you know, I, I wish you the best of luck. I hope you can do it. I hope you can do something in terms of working with your neighbors, but this is going to be a very difficult process and I just hope it gets done. It's one of my frustrating things is to see all the time and effort and years that you put in and the staff puts in just to have something five years from now that's still sitting there. So I, I hope you can do it. With that, I will support the motion. It is a difficult decision. I do understand the comments from the neighbors. But again, Commissioner Ferris laid it out perfectly in terms of what our duties and obligations are and I agree with that. So with that, please prepare us for a vote.
Commissioner Ferris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehead?
Yes.
Commissioner McMan?
Yes.
Chair Lanson?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Commissioner Linkapsen.
Again, I have to read on an appeal period. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days. Next, we go to item eight, department reports. It says there's none. So we go to item nine, commissioner comments and AB 1234 reports. Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did, I did want to take this time to at least have some comments. We in the community, since our last meeting, lost a dedicated public servant to our community with the passing of Marilyn Carpenter. In the early 1960s, she moved to the area and participated in the drafting of the original general plan. In 1970, it was actually approved with her and other committed participation with, which really led to the plan with which the, the city has developed today. She became an advocate for civic participation and addressing city issues before the council all the way through, on numerous occasions when the city was going through its rapid growth stages during the 1970s and 80s. She actually then started serving the public with the term on the Ventura County Planning Commission. In the 1990s, she served two terms on the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, this body. And through the 2000s and 2010s and 2020s, she remained active with letters, memorandum of the city and spoke up on planning issues and urging decision makers to, to really keep the high quality of life in our community high. Prior to the COVID shutdowns, when the Thousand Oaks 2045 general plan advisory committee was meeting, she was there in person participating in some of the interactive sessions and providing her understanding of the history of the city. Former Thousand Oaks mayor and Ventura County supervisor Linda Parks once described Carpenter as an irreplaceable asset to our planning commission, offering a goldmine of experience. And from the time of our city's incorporation in 1964, Marilyn Carpenter has been there every step along the way for seven decades. And we should take the time to reflect fondly on her contributions to the community, City of Thousand Oaks, as in no small part, the city that it is because of the contributions of Marilyn Carpenter. I know I personally will miss her and I believe the community, she'll be sorely missed. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. She actually reached out to me once I was appointed and was very gracious and again, she was a guiding light as part of our planning process. So thanks for bringing that up. Any other commissioner comments? All right. Let's go to then item 10, staff update. Ms. Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements or upcoming issues?
No, well, tomorrow, city council will be having a consent calendar item, which is what you approved tonight, which is the funding appropriation and purchase of an open space parcel by the city. And subsequently will be transferred to COSCA. And then at the next city council meeting, it will be after the summer break and that will be August 27th. In terms of planning commission items, 11B items scheduled on the upcoming planning commission schedule, there's, this is, will be our last meeting before the summer break. And the next planning commission meeting will be August 26th. And to date, we have no items scheduled for that date, but items may be forthcoming. And that is it.
And with that, I would highly recommend everybody register to vote. And with that, I will thank everybody and call the meeting adjourned and the next planning commission meeting scheduled for August 26th. Good night, Thousand Oaks.